I'd like to call the meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're going to do the Buckeye Valley Board of Education Regular Report Meeting for the month of October. Can I get a roll call, please?
Michelle Abuny?
Yep.
Mr. Dickey?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Here.
September?
Here.
Mrs. Scowden?
Here.
Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move that the Buckeye Valley Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Michelle Abuny?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
September?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
I will move that the Buckeye Valley Board of Education approve the attached minutes on the recommendation of the treasurer. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Michelle Abuny?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
September?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
All right, we're on to public participation on agenda items. I believe we have one on agenda. It would be Candy Staley.
Candy Staley, 2258 County Road 156, Cardington. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to start off with saying it's great to be a Baron. It's always been great to be a Baron, but especially now with how well the teams are doing. So congratulations to the sports program. I also saw on the agenda that we have a couple of donations, and I want to point out one. The Eagles Women's Auxiliary in Delaware has been very supportive and generous over the years, and this year is no exception. So thank them so much. When I was looking over dispersments, and Kelly, I called and left you a message. I'm not the best at financials, but I was going through those, and I was amazed at how many individual names appear. And I'm hoping that those people are school personnel, but it was kind of hard to tell from the dispersments. Of course, in fire and security, it seems like there's fluctuating rates, so I didn't know if maybe an alarm had been set off. I wasn't sure what was going on there. And then at the Ashley Station, on 9/11, $10,837.12 went to them. I was wondering, maybe is that gas for buses? And if so, do we get a rate reduction, whereas there are more economical way to obtain fuel? Delhi Landscape, was this bid out? And do they cover the whole district? Is there a set fee? And does this include the administration building as well? And do they do snow removal? And I was wondering, what does Hill International Trucks LLC do? They've shown up on dispersments before. So for someone that's not knowledgeable in all those things, and Kelly, I admire you greatly for dealing with those numbers. To the layperson, it would be helpful if there was a way maybe to label those. I don't know, color code them or something, so there's a better understanding of that. And then the last thing on the agenda tonight, it says something about an organizational chart. Now, I've been to the meetings, so I think I know what that's about. But for someone, like there's someone that's come just to see how things are run tonight, and it just says organizational chart. There's no explanation. It doesn't tell you what it's for. So perhaps the public should be apprised of that ahead of time on the agenda. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the district updates.
It's a big one. Hi, everyone. I'm here to recognize our varsity boys golf team. We have a group here, these five students and our assistant coach. We're part of the group that helped lead our school district to a state runner-up championship this year. We have Sam Reynolds, Matthew Ralph, Harlow Hafner, Jase Honhorse, Grayson Keller here, along with Coach TJ Cheney. They went on to have a district championship this season. They overall, for their record, were 16-2. Again, Division II, state runner-up as a team. And also, Sam Reynolds played very well at the tournament, was able to achieve an individual state champion accomplishment. They had a great season and very, very fun. Very proud of the way these kids and our coaches conducted themselves throughout the season. Thank you so much.
Congratulations all.
Real quick, I want to thank all the administration that were there. Mr. Strange just was there, went all the way down Dayton to watch us. All the administration was there to come see us. It was great, even in the rain the next day. Horrible day the next day, so the kids really appreciated it. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
That's a huge accomplishment. You guys should be very proud.
All right, do we have anything else, Mr. Jeffrey?
No.
Very good. We are on to our financial items. We've got the financial report. Can I get a motion to approve the attached financial report, please?
I move that the Buckeye Valley Board of Education approve the attached financial report at the recommendation of the treasurer.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey?
I'll second.
Thank you.
This is our September Monday Resolution. No big issues again. The board heard the five-year forecast last month, so that is now filed with DEW and is open on the website for everyone to enjoy.
Do you have any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Michelle Abuny?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
September?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
All right, and we are on to a resolution. Kelly?
Yep. So last month, the board, I presented the first reading of the adoption of the 2025 COPSS Post-Assurance Compliance Policy. And it just states that once the middle school COPSS program is complete, that the district will file the appropriate documents with the IRS every single year. So we ceded a bought board policy to do so. Therefore, a process two readings. So the first reading was last month. This is your final reading and acceptance of the policy.
Mine's not pulling up. There's no changes from last month.
No, there's no changes from last month.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the 2025 COPSS Resolution. I will so move. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Dave.
Thank you. Roll call.
Michelle Abuny?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
September?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
All right, we are on to our new business. We've got our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent items as presented, please?
I move that the Buckeye Valley Board of Education approve consent items as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So roll through the consent items.
Five point two, we've added two classified substitutes in classified employment.
Whenever someone makes a transfer, we also let you know. So we have one custodian who's gone from high school to middle school. Supplementals, there are winter coaches. Try to get those in. I also have a club in there as well. Our winter coaches is going to be approved this meeting. With the supplementals, we also have a big list of volunteers, people willing to help out programs in gymnastics and cheerleading and basketball. Five point six, we have two donations. $1,000 from our ladies auxiliary of the Eagles. And we have $829 from a business down in Delaware, which is Frymar Distributing, doing a nice job to help us as well. Both, we thank both of those organizations for helping us. Overnight trips that they're sponsoring, Washington, DC. Last year, we kind of ran into an issue at graduation at the same time. So the middle school has moved it to, from May 11th to the 14th this year, which will help us a lot. Thanks to the middle school for doing that. On five point eight, we have a resolution to adopt special education policies, and that comes from the state. It's a state model we do every year. On five point nine, the said organizational chart. And just a few highlights of that. What we did as a cabinet, as a team, was to align the executive directors right under me. And so they are aligned, or somehow aligned, aligned underneath me. We've also expanded the role of the assistant superintendent, do some different things based on his skill set, so we've given him a few more roles. We added a human resource specialist under our treasurer, as you can see on the far right.
Sorry, I was just thinking, I was looking at your screen.
I don't have it in general.
And, can you get on your... And we've added a spot for a communication specialist when that happens as well. So we're looking at that as our, to get the board approved. And just to show our organization and the realignment of some of the positions and their duties and responsibilities. Now, we're going to realign that so it's a little cleaner for you. Pending board approval. Five point ten, first reading of the board policies. And the superintendent's committee has met numerous times for multiple hours. And twice a year, updates come. And they have come, and they're a pretty heavy amount. Mary Kate serves on that with me and our team. And we have those for your first reading. And we'll always do two readings. This is the first one. Next one will be the second reading, based on your feedback. Any questions for any of those consent items?
I don't know what the appropriate way to go about this is, but with the, I know there's a lot of policies that we need to update. Is there a way we could maybe, I don't know, take less each meeting and then we can actually kind of talk about it, make sure people are aware of what they, you know what I mean? Like, this was a lot to deal with.
It's a lot. It's a lot.
I don't know. This was unusual.
Yes. Like, we could cut it in half, probably.
Some of the policies themselves were very lengthy as well.
Right. I just felt like, and then we could actually kind of at least give everyone something like what these are.
And I can tell you, it took three and a half hours for us to go through those, I'm sure. You guys don't do those in a day or two as well. Yeah, we can definitely look at them that time. Hopefully, it won't be as large a bulk of what we did this time, but just cut that in half.
With there being a first reading and a second reading, there's a month or so between the two. So if there's any changes, those can always come up at the second meeting. There's no law that says you have to automatically approve or not approve just at the second meeting, and that's it.
Yeah, good point.
It can take longer on some.
Anything else?
Questions about consent agenda items?
I had a few on the policies that were ready to do that.
Sure. I've got a couple as well. Why don't you go first?
Okay, so 2431 is talking about athletic exemptions. So it's, so we mentioned ice hockey. Is that our only athletic exemption this time? Or is that just an example?
That was specifically called out in House Bill 96 in the biennial budget. There was one sentence in there that said, "High school students playing ice hockey can go from district to district."
So specifically just for that sport, then?
Just for ice hockey.
All right. I thought that was interesting. That was always called out. Okay.
Kind of have to wonder which district it was that got that in there.
5136 was about devices and usage. I guess my question was, how does that, like, what does the law say about, I know obviously no devices during the school day now. What about, because the policy wasn't clear to me, like, what about if, okay, we're on a field trip during the school day, our students are allowed to have those on the bus and act it then? Like, I didn't see what the policy stated, so.
And what we talked with the principals about, it depends. Overnight trip to Washington, obviously, they're going to put them away sometimes, and other times they'll have them out. On a field trip, that supervisor says, yes, we need to have, or no, we'd like to say no until there's emergency or something else. The rule is no during school day, no matter where you're.
So then that would equate buses, then?
Yes.
Okay. Because I don't know if it's specifically said, and that might be something to look at.
It's, it states that while riding in school vehicles, they're allowed to. Oh, they're prohibited except while riding in school vehicles.
I was gonna say, but during the school day, it seems like we should be consistent on that.
On a field trip, yeah.
It's not specified in there. School-related events, but then it gives examples of after-school activities, extracurricular.
So it's not clear, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah. And then 8640, sorry, I need to actually pull this one up real quick. So on 8640, that was transportation. So I guess just, I don't know if we need to have a definition of how we're defining field trip, because it gives different definitions for different types of trips. It doesn't really define what a field trip is. And then it also says, "The board assumes transportation costs for a certain number of trips." I guess my question is, how many? Like, that's pretty vague.
Yeah, I actually have that marked as well. Why we didn't go with just the all field trips option versus having a certain number? I mean, if we're doing one, we're going to do them all. Any of the schools sponsor field trips, we're going to provide transportation for. There was another one that I had a question about on this one. The last one on page one, "District students not affiliated with the trip activity. Non-district students and/or children of preschool age shall not be permitted to ride on the trip vehicle without prior approval of the principal." Would that be principal approval? Would that be superintendent approval? Would that be transportation supervisor approval? I know you have in there principal right now, but I'm curious as to why the principal would make that decision to allow non-students to ride the buses.
I think these are really great questions to bring up outside of the meeting and get into the reasonings behind that. And because, I mean, I didn't know that these questions were coming, and I think that if those questions were, you know, brought up beforehand, I think everybody could have come with those reasons, like, already prepared, because everything had discussions behind it.
Sure.
And there were six to eight people in the room, so there's...
Well, this is our first time meeting as a board with these policies in front of us, so this is our first opportunity as a board to discuss them. So in keeping with compliance with Open Meetings Act, it is our opportunity to ask questions. So we have time between now and our next meeting to hopefully just get some clarification on the reasoning behind these. I've got a couple other questions about a few others, so. There was another one on this one, too. The first one on the second page. It goes about, no student is allowed to drive on any trip, and exception may be made by the principal. Again, the principal's making the exception. So the principal can allow a student to drive with written authorization and release from liability. So we'll allow a student to do it, but we won't allow another student to ride with that student, even if the other student's parents allow it. I mean, I'm just curious, is there a reasoning behind that? So again, if we can just get some clarification on those between now and the next meeting, I'd appreciate it. Troy, do you have the others?
Would this be special, to be worth, like, in a special meeting? To, like, because there's a lot here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we necessarily need a special meeting.
I'll just shoot an email, like, to Mr. Strange.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Yeah, I wasn't trying to attack anybody. I'm just trying to make sure I understand. I did have one on 5223. So that's a religious instruction. And in the summer, I know we looked at a bunch of the policies that were going to come up, and I know it had been completely rewritten, which there's a lot taken out and added again. I guess just to make sure we're in compliance, because I think, like, the period amounts are off from what the state says. So I think that's something we need to look at, like, the amount of time. So I think it's twice a week, if I remember reading it right, versus what we have here. So just to make sure that lines up. I think everything else was okay. I tried to...
There, there's the drafting note on the last page that even kind of adds some clarity that, you know, there's a line in there about non-educational or non-program-related materials, however, are not permitted for return to school. And then there is some clarification in the drafting note that it's going to be difficult to anticipate challenges. I don't know if it's worth us striking the "non-educational or non-program-related materials, however, are not permitted for return to school" with the drafting note there stating that it's likely going to include challenges. I don't know if that's something that you guys considered in your discussions or not, but in the drafting notes, too, those do not become part of the policy.
That's correct.
But it does sound like there is some uncertainty regarding in how to determine whether it's program-related or not. Who determines that? And it also even says that you may determine down the road that a material is not program-related, at which time it would be worth revising the policy.
I think your point's well taken. If you have questions, email me, and we'll get our committee back together and respond to them. That way, you don't have to make, we will.
And then you can let the, email the rest of the board?
Absolutely.
Great.
Yep.
Anybody have anything else? We certainly do appreciate all the time that does get put in. Mary Kate, volunteer time on the policy committee, and everybody else that's involved in that. It's no small task. All right, no further questions? Roll call.
Michelle Abuny?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
September?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
All right, we have got a resolution to amend the Architect contract. Kelly, can you elaborate on this, please?
Sure. Can I get a motion, second?
We certainly can. I will, I will move to approve the amended contract with Shore Architect, Inc. for Design and Related Construction Administrative Services for the Buckeye Valley Middle School Construction Project. Thank you.
So when Mr. Reader was hired, we put a new set of eyes on the documents. And after, I think he saw the first day of school drop-off at the middle school, he was utterly scared to death, I think is a nice way to put it, about the traffic and the flow of traffic at the middle school. And so we asked the architects to go back to the drawing board and establish a more, I mean, just safe, safe right away for bus drop-off and parent drop-off. By doing so, it moved, it shipped, pretty much picked up the building and shifted it. And so therefore, the architect had to go back and do additional services that wasn't in the initial contract that we had with them. So this is the amendment. All in all, the total dollar amount did not change. We're just changing some amounts in tweaking inside of the internal budget. But in order to do so, the board would have to approve it. But in whole, the dollar amount is not changing.
Correct.
And it wasn't just the architect. He had to have engineering.
It was all the subcontractors. It was like, once you picked up and physically moved the building, then like, HPC had to get involved, and the survey had to get re-involved, and the soil boring. So like, unfortunately, it was like a trickle effect. And so we do, we do believe that we have a very secure, safe plan going forward, and I know you guys have all reviewed it. But this was, we took additional time, we took additional funds to ensure that.
We wanted to make sure we were doing it right and doing it safely. Built the last, so we appreciate all of you putting eyes on it.
I like it.
I think we're done. I think we're all completed. Finally, we've unveiled November.
Do we have a projected time when we'll be able to share with the public?
Yes, we talked to them today just before the meeting. November 13th, they will be bringing the final plans to us. They've been working with Summit Builders, who we've chosen as our builder to make sure that we're under the projected budget that we allow. So November 13th will be the day that we get to see it. They're going to, we talked about, I haven't mentioned it, community, open community forum, so everyone can put their eyes on it as well, give us input, and hopefully some 3D models and some neat stuff to really view this. It's going to be a real change in our campus for the better for our kids and our staff and our families. November 13th.
So maybe we can have something in the evening hours, like an open house?
That's the plan, is to have some input from the community as well.
Any other questions?
I like it. Can I ever say that?
Roll call, please.
Michelle Abuny?
Yes.
Mr. Dickey?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
September?
Yes.
Mrs. Scowden?
Yes.
All right, we are on to public participation on non-agenda items. We will go in the order they were received. Nicole Tackett? Let's see, here, here. Danica Davis? Riley Pierceall? Okay. 0 for 3. Noah Krantz? All right, Mark Davis? All right, Bridget Bolton? Krista Bolton?
Is this the right?
Yes.
Okay.
Would be. Terry Kidwell?
Yeah.
Hey! We got a winner! Please state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Terry Kidwell, 2141 Claypool Road, Ashley. Okay, so yeah, my name is Terry Kidwell. I'm the head cook at Buckeye Valley West. And I've been cooking in the district for 15-plus years now. And I just wanted to say that I can promise you all that yesterday was not the first time that I had made a fresh or homemade meal in our buildings. We, for some reason, everything is, I don't know, confused about the freshness of the food that we are providing our children in this district. So we strive in all of our buildings to provide the freshest, best meal, nutritious, delicious meals, all the while staying in a very strict state and federal guideline and budget. We kind of are offended when people kind of color our meals into... We kind of are offended when people kind of color our meals into, into question, because we feel we are well-trained, we know how to create and execute menus in our, in our buildings. We have been doing it for a long time. We, in each building, create the menu that the kids in the building want by taste testing, collaborating with the children. Like, these menus that we create are things they love, that they want, that they eat. Chicken nuggets, they love them. I know that chicken nuggets are chicken nuggets, but if you put salad with chicken nuggets and you put fresh fruit with chicken nuggets, you get some pretty good components with your chicken nuggets. So we just wanted to come as a collective group and say, hey, we are doing this. We know what we're doing. We've been trained, and we, all of us have had extensive training in our field, and we know what we're doing. So we're just kind of offended that it's out in the, you know, public that, no, with just a couple months, a couple days a month, we're going to have some good menus, items. So no, if you prefer, anyone come stop in a building, any building, have lunch, any day. I guarantee it's not going to just be a couple days a month that you're getting fresh stuff. That, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Michael? Kaden Slubber? That wraps up off agenda public participation. Oh, is she? Where is it?
Go up to her original, and she breaks it out for you.
Okay.
Yep.
Candy Staley.
Sorry, I just have twice. It's just she breaks it in her comments.
I didn't want to assume Candy.
You should have my information memorized by now. Speaking of public participation, I just want to point out once again that on the agenda, when you pull up the agenda and it says public participation in the form, it's the old form. So people, we need to have the new form on the agendas, so there's no confusion. At least when I pull it up, that's what happens. It's the old card form. I know the card form, so. I pondered about saying this or not, so I will just go ahead and say it. I know being a school board member is a thankless job. I understand that, and I appreciate everyone taking the time. But having attended many, many meetings now, I'm still in a quandary as to the direction the board is taking. There does not seem to be set goals, and there appears to be that some of the agenda items appear to be kind of random. If a board member wants an item on the agenda, how do you go about doing that? I think Dr. Strangis and Mr. Dickey, you helped set the agenda, if that's my understanding. But I just want to caution again that the board should not be micromanaging items. The PMs, the staff, the community members are told to go through the chain of command, and so I think that that needs to be followed. I just want to think about the school fees. I think the treasurer perhaps is the person that knows best the financial picture, and so that should be the person that's heading that up. And as far as, it's interesting, you mentioned healthier lunches, because I sub at school and I come in and help with things. So I'm there, I was at West last year. It's my understanding that there's, every building offers a fresh salad, and the salads at East, I can't say for the rest of them, are delicious. When you say that there's grilled chicken, it's still processed. It might have the grill marks on it, but, you know, they're not sitting back there with little hibachis doing, you know, 300 pieces of chicken. So I understand that, I understand that you want healthy lunches, but I'm telling you, there are so many regulations that are going on that I know those folks are doing their darndest to provide good lunches. So I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We do not have executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion passes and the meeting is adjourned.